Okay, Mayor, we are ready if you are ready.
Yes.
Stand by. Ready, don't. Okay. Here we go. In five, four, three, two, one, you're on, Mayor.
Hey, welcome everyone to tonight's virtual regular meeting of the Livermore City Council at 7:00 PM, Monday, November 22nd, 2021. We are just coming back from a closed session. How to participate in the meeting is can be found at the end of the agenda. And the clerk will explain the process as we go along at the various appropriate times. So I'm calling the meeting to order and could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Benano has an excused absence this evening for the record. Councilmember Carling.
Here.
Councilmember Kig. Here. Vice Mayor Monroe.
Here.
Mayor Warner.
Here. Next step is the Pledge of Allegiance, if you can join me, you can be on mute, I'll go through it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're now on to any report of action taken in the closed session?
So I
Sorry about that, Mr. Mayor, so with regard to the third item, the property negotiations, no, there's no reportable action taken.
Okay. And Mr. Alessio, was there any reportable action on the first two items?
No, Mayor, there's no report of action on the first two items.
Okay, there we go. Up next is the agenda item three, Proclamations and Presentations. Tonight, it's the Livermore Municipal Airport Annual Update, provided by Airport Commissioner Chair, Commission Chair Adam Bartsch. Adam, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor Warner, members of the city council and concerned citizens. I am pleased to present tonight the Livermore Municipal Airport Annual Update. Next slide, please. So tonight, I'll talk a little bit about our relatively healthy operations counts in in light of the pandemic. How the airport is an asset to the Tri-Valley region and community. I'll highlight a couple of improvement projects about the airport. And I'll talk about continued outreach related to noise issues at Livermore Airport. Next slide, there we go. So 2019 was the last year that we did not have a pandemic. So you can see we had about 160,000 operations at the airport. In 2020, operations are down to about 151,000 operations. And so far for 2021, we've had a slight rebound in our operations counts and we we may even exceed the numbers for 2019 once once all is said and done. So operations counts fairly stable below our all time highs by by a large margin, but healthy through the pandemic. Next slide, please. The airport is an asset to the Tri-Valley community. We have a lot of public service organizations that operate out of the airport. We have the United States Civil Air Patrol, Alameda County Sheriff's Air Squadron and the Air Unit, as well as numerous local small businesses and Fortune 500 companies. They all operate in and out of the airport. We also offer significant services at the airport. There's aviation fueling, there's a fixed base operator at Five Rivers Aviation. They provide aircraft handling and storage. We also have flight training, several flight schools at the airport. Aircraft maintenance operations, several of those. And we do have an onsite restaurant at Elevation LVK. So there's quite a lot of services available at the airport. Next slide, please. We have some projects that are ongoing right now. Five Rivers Aviation is in process of constructing some hangar space. And those will provide about 45,000 square feet of additional aircraft hangar space. That is previously approved development under their existing contract. We also have for 2022, a planned $9 million federal grant to bring taxiways in line with with current standards. This doesn't represent a major change to lay out of the airport, but it will realign some taxiways and it'll be noticeable to pilots who are operating in and out of the airport. Next slide, please. One significant change for this year has been a real increase in in community awareness surrounding noise at the airport. Previous noise complaint numbers averaged in the neighborhood of 10 or so a month. And with increased awareness surrounding potential development, there was really a lot of a lot of interest from the community in the airport. And that resulted in a significant increase in our noise complaints. So it went from maybe 10 complaints to hundreds of complaints without really a particularly noticeable change in operation counts, at least in the short term. And so we've been trying to work with the community to, you know, to help really understand the source of frustrations and work with community and pilots to try to improve the situation, both in terms of, you know, reducing noise impact in the community and fostering understanding between airport users and Tri-Valley residents. Some contributing factors are likely people being at home during the day when aircraft activity is higher. I mentioned increased community awareness. And we do have some some additional logged violations of our our not curfew, but our voluntary avoidance of flying at nighttime. So what we'd really like to do, you can go ahead and stay on the next slide, there you go. So what we'd really like to do is is continue to to perform outreach related to to noise at the airport. That means educating our pilot community about noise sensitive areas and how they can best avoid producing excessive noise in the vicinity of those communities while still operating at the peak of 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 safety, right? We can't compromise safety in the name of reducing noise. We do investigate and respond to every single complaint filed, which has become a much, much larger job. But that does give us a lot of really useful information in in determining what the noise issues actually are. You know, with with 10 with 10 logged complaints a month, you don't have statistically significant information, you can't look at trends easily. Now that we have a lot more information, we can really do a lot more with it. So that that's actually proven to be to be useful. We do meet with our our local operators, flight schools, other commercial operators, and and communicate with them about our efforts to mitigate noise. And and I would definitely like to see more opportunities to, you know, have airport stakeholders as well as the community interact surrounding this issue and and improve the improve the understanding on both sides. And that's that leads me to the end of of the prepared remarks. Are there any questions from the from the council?
Okay, I'll ask, do any of my fellow council members have any questions or comments at this point? I don't see any, I want to thank you for the work you do. It's certainly challenging these days. And just saying, looking forward to working with our neighboring cities and our liaison committees as we address the airport operations. So the relying on the staff and the airport commission to gather and analyze the requisite data for those conversations. So thank you, I really appreciate it. And I'll just say I appreciate some of the conversations we've had over the past year about the issues. So thanks again.
Thank you, Mayor Warner.
Okay, we're now on to Citizens Forum. And with like the city clerk to explain how people can participate in the process.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. One, for non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during Citizens Forum to address the city council on any item of interest that is within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. Two, agendized items. The public can address the city council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council and the city council is not required to answer questions from the public. However, the mayor has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in this portion of tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person per item. Members of the public can participate by using the raise hand feature or star nine if calling in when the item begins. Please do not wait until the public comment period opens for each item to raise your hand, instead, raise your hand now. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced and their three minutes will begin upon being unmuted. The mayor will announce the conclusion of the public comment period after comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I'll add to that a couple of things, one in conformance with the Brown Act, no city council action can occur on any items presented during Citizens Forum. And also, we'll limit the Citizens Forum in the meeting, first part of the meeting to a half an hour, so at quarter of eight, we'll wrap up the Citizens Forum and defer until towards the end of the meeting and the clerk will announce at what point we're five minutes in and, you know, the appropriate break. So at this point, I'd ask city clerk if there's anyone who wishes to address us during Citizens Forum?
Yes, Mayor, there are two requests to speak. The first speaker is Purnam Sheth, followed by Alan, followed by Carl Wenti. Purnam Sheth, please unmute yourself.
Hi, yes, hi, this is Purnam Sheth, councilmembers, staff, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk to you. In terms of the airport, I do have a, I have multiple concerns, particularly in terms of the the noise problems and how they've been characterized, you know, by the airport and airport commission. Earlier this year, in several meetings, or at least one meeting for sure, when the airport commissioners were asked, you know, is there a noise problem? They basically said, no, there is no noise problem. And the complaints are all because of social media. They immediately dismissed all the residents of this Tri-Valley as just social, you know, social media issues. That was incredibly insensitive. And I, I, you know, it was just appalling. The you know, since that time, the statistics have continued to stay constant or up. Part of that is, I believe, people being ignored for years and years. It's clear that the noise noise monitoring has not been put in place. The curfew violations, as an example, the voluntary curfew violations. They've been happening at 10, 20, 30 a month. And yet, the airport has done nothing over the years. I myself, you know, go to the app, you know, Flight Radar or FlightAware, and I am doing their job by going on that app, finding the curfew violations and pointing that out to the airport. This is something they could do themselves. They've, I believe, refused to do in previous years, I don't know about this year. When this could have been outreach, they could have taken proactively. In terms of outreach to the other airport operators and so on, I'm sure they're doing some of that. But there's almost no emails that go out to all the all the pilots. There's a monthly letter that goes out with, you know, three, four bullet points on, you know, abide by the, try to please abide by our noise noise things, but nothing, nothing significant. In fact, the last time, the last congratulation was the number of complaints have gone down, so thank you very much. But if you don't look for it, you won't find it. I think the one last item is statistics on the on the on the airport and the one of the commissioners raised that. We don't have statistics on the number of jets that operate. Those statistics are available from the FFA, from from my understanding. Yet none of those statistics are reported to the to the to the council and what to do about them. So I encourage you to dig deep and really do real outreach and and not just a a periphery view. Thank you.
The next speaker is Alan, followed by Carl Wenti. Alan, please unmute yourself.
Hello, City Council, I'm currently on Bart. The air airport presentation went a little bit faster than I anticipated, my train is a bit slower. May I defer my comments until after Carl Wenti speaks, I will be in station in about two minutes.
And the next speaker is Carl Wenti. Carl, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Just here to express appreciation for what you do to serve your community and look to make it a better place. You can please some people sometime, can't please all the people all the time. What I will say is your accessibility and willing to listen to the community, despite what some people say out there, you all are a great group of listeners that want to intake information and do what is best for the greater good of society, which is an imperfect science that we all know. Also like to express appreciation and thanks to the City of Livermore staff. City Manager, Mr. Roberts, and has an exceptional team of people that I believe want to lean in and help make Livermore the best place that it can be. Those that put on a bulletproof vest to go to work, we salute you. Those that are keeping us safe, thank you so much. Those teachers out there that are teaching and nursing our kids and creating the next generation of leaders and citizens, y'all are awesome and appreciated. And on that note, of the people, for the people, by the people, may we continue to raise a community, a generation of people that understand how this government functions and how to lean in. There are so many opportunities within the the governmental function, the quasi-governmental function that makes Livermore Livermore lean in. There's arts commissions, there's there's updates, strategic updates on arts and how it works through Livermore. There's a general plan update right now. This is huge business for the City of Livermore and how we're defining the next generation, the next half a generation going forward. So just the the more we as a citizenry can lean in with positive good discourse and positive good ideas coming forward, the better place the world will be. So that's my idealism for tonight, but just thanks and appreciation, council, for what you do, staff, city staff, for what you do. It is appreciated. You all are an awesome council, you listen, you're dynamic, you're thoughtful, and it is appreciated. Thank you.
Next speaker is Donna Cavan, followed by Alan. Donna Cavan, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Donna Cavan. Can you hear me? Donna Cavan, I too wanted to make a few comments about the airport. I agree with the previous speaker that we should have access to the number of jets that are now coming in and what companies they are representing and what aviation groups, including flight schools. And also, I would like the the council to look into the issue or ask the airport commission to look into the issue of lead in aviation fuel. As you may have been following in San Jose, the Reed View Airport, this has become a critical issue because of high levels of lead in children in schools near the airport. And we have several schools near the Livermore Airport. And the airport, as I understand it, is still allowing planes with lead in their aviation fuel to land and to refuel. So this is a critical health issue. No level of lead is safe in children. So again, if the city council can ask the airport commission for specific information about the lead being used in aviation fuel at the airport, this is critical. And I would also ask you if you can get the study from Santa Clara County, it's quite extensive. And to use this in guiding us in going further to ensure that the health of our community, especially the levels of lead, is addressed. Thank you.
The last request to speak is from Alan. Alan, please unmute yourself.
Hello, City Council, for the record, I'm a Livermore resident. At the previous city council meeting, Chris Carter, Executive Director of the Livermore Valley Performing Arts Center, LV PAC, said, "Diversity, equity, and inclusion is important to us and a priority in our leadership." End quote. His words surprised me. Any good done, good deed done by Livermore Arts is overshadowed by LV PAC board members' harmful lawsuits. Its board of directors includes Joan Sepala and Jean King, who have helped fund a campaign against affordable housing in Livermore and are now paralyzing affordable housing in court. In September, Alameda County Superior Court Judge Frans Roche ruled their group must post a $500,000 bond because their lawsuit is in bad faith or merely, quote, "for the purposes of delaying or thwarting low income housing," end quote. Not only is California suffering from a housing shortage, but affordable housing is a matter of racial justice. National Low Income Housing Coalition President Diane Yentel wrote, quote, "Decades of structural racism created tremendous racial disparities in housing and homelessness. African Americans represent 13% of the general population, but are 40% of people experiencing homelessness and more than 50% of homelessness families with children. Black families are 26% of all extremely low income renters," end quote. Livermore is a predominantly white city and it will continue to be so as long as people like LV PAC executives, Joan Sepala and Jean King block affordable housing. Not only are they keeping out people of color, but also excluding those who work in retail, hospitality, wineries, breweries, and our schools, as well as any youth burden but with student debt. If their lawsuit delays affordable housing through 2022, the project will lose 14.4 million in A1 funding, to say nothing of the harm caused by denying families a place to live for another year. LV PAC executives are responsible for lawsuits enema to diversity, equity, and inclusion. I have mentioned lawsuits in plural. LV PAC executives are also litigating against a solar farm that would be built north of Livermore. It matches the type of green energy facility with battery storage called for by Governor Newsom in a July 2021 proclamation. Delaying solar harms the youth, of course, but also disproportionately impacts people of color whose communities are often located near oil refineries, such as in Hayward and Richmond. This is called environmental racism. The Livermore Valley Performing Arts Center is led by hypocrites. To truly serve its community, all its executives contributing to these lawsuits must resign or those board members must withdraw their litigation, which is racist, iniquitous, and excluding. Thank you.
Mayor, there are no more requests to speak.
Mayor, you're on mute.
Thank you. We're now on to the closing of the public forum, on to consent calendar. And the those items are routine in nature and act upon by the city council with a single action. Members of the audience wishing to provide public input, again, use the raised hand feature. And you can comment on any of the consent calendar items. So with that, I'll open up public comment on the consent calendar. Do we have anybody who wishes to address us on the consent calendar?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, I'll close public comment on the consent calendar. Are there any items on the consent calendar that council members wish to speak to? Okay, I'll, before I ask for a motion, I just want to say one thing on item 5.8. Let's see. That's the resolution of the Continued Local Emergency and Authorizing Remote Teleconferencing Meetings. I just want to say that on Friday, I had the opportunity to spend some time with the infectious disease expert at Kaiser and learned a lot about what we might expect for the coming winter. Bottom line is, the science says, we still need to wear masks, we still need to get vaccinated, and that's including the boosters and now the children that are that are available. But the idea is, it's still not advisable to have meetings indoors in the winter without masks. And so this is just by way of a heads up that in terms of us returning to the council chambers, we may be advisable to think about seeing what happens through January and February, because we'll see what this what the surge is going to do. At the moment, we've got a very annoying tail on our case rate that's not going down, it's coming up. So just a word of a caution on that. Is there any councillor that wishes to make a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll move.
Sure, I'll move for the consent calendar.
Okay, so I think I heard okay, so, okay, we'll do it that way. Councilmember Carling moved it and councillor Kig seconded the motion on the consent calendar. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Benano is absent for the record. Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Councilmember Kig. Hi. Vice Mayor Monroe.
Hi.
Mayor Warner.
Hi. Okay, passes unanimously with one absence. We're now on to public hearings, six dot one. In introducing an ordinance to consider amendments to our Development Code. And can we have the staff report, please?
Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager, and I'd like to introduce Special Projects Coordinator Susan Frost, who will lead us through this item.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, Mayor and council members, I want to make sure that everyone can hear me. The Development Code Amendment 21-001 is proposed amendments to the Development Code Regarding Home Occupations. Earlier this year, the city council heard comments regarding a home occupation that allowed customers to drop off and pick up bicycles for repair. Neighborhood preservation had initiated enforcement actions since current home occupation regulations restrict customers from visiting the home. City council directed staff to review current regulations and determine possible amendments to the ordinance. I do have a slide presentation to share. And I will do that now, I apologize. Current regulations address businesses that may be operated from a residence. They also include cottage food operations. And we have and we have separate regulations for those since they are also regulated by the state.
Susan?
Yes.
Your slides are not displayed.
Okay, hold on just a second, please. I thought I had hit that handy-dandy share screen button. Okay, is that sharing?
Yes, it is.
Okay, my apologies.
There we go, perfect.
The current regulations also identify allowed and prohibited uses associated and associated operational standards. Under current regulations, employees must be members of the household. The regulations include prohibited uses that are determined to be inappropriate in a residential area such as automobile repair. Current regulations do not allow onsite clients except in limited circumstances such as tutoring, which is limited to two clients at one time, and for business operators with mobility limitations. Staff did review regulations from other jurisdictions such as Dublin, Pleasanton, San Ramon, Fremont, Hayward, and Tracy, and found that Livermore currently is one of the more restrictive ordinances for home occupations. Staff, as a result, staff did look at possible amendments to the ordinance. The recommended amendments are intended to help facilitate job opportunities for residents given recent market trends and COVID adjustments. They are also intended to maintain the residential character of neighborhoods by carefully considering any changes to uses and the operational criteria. As a result, staff's recommendations focus on three primary areas. The first would allow onsite clients for certain uses, limited to no more than two at a time and by appointment. Second, the recommendations would also expand allowed uses to those that do require onsite clients such as barber and beauty and nail services and, you know, personal training and small appliance repair. Finally, the current ordinance does not include hours of operation. Those are recommended to be 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, 6:00 PM daily. The changes that are recommended are similar to those to other jurisdictions that allow onsite clients. Commercial food operations are handled separately in the ordinance due to state regulations that were adopted in 2013 to allow home preparation of food for sale. State law specifically allows one employee or a full-time equivalent and customers to go to the residence to purchase food items. State law also regulates the type of foods that may be prepared. The city can regulate cottage food operations as long as those regulations do not conflict with state law. We currently have about 24 permits for cottage food operations and no complaints. The amendments also include updates to our Home Occupation Permit Section, Chapter 9.05, which includes the procedures for filing and processing and review of home occupation permits. The permits ensure that the use is allowed and that operational standards can be met. However, currently permits do not require renewal once issued. Staff is recommending an annual renewal of home occupation permits and also the commercial, excuse me, the cottage food operations to allow review of the businesses for compliance with the regulations. And the renewal would be coordinated with the business license renewal. The Planning Commission considered the amendments at their September 21st meeting. The commission did concur with staff recommendations, but with several changes. These included an increase to, in the allowed onsite clients to a maximum of three at a time to allow one full-time equivalent employee in addition to the onsite resident, extending the closing hours to 7:00 PM, and including gross sales limits if appropriate for home occupations. Staff generally concurs with the Planning Commission's recommendations. However, we do not agree with the regulating gross sales for home occupations since they generally provide a service or are a home office compared to a commercial food operation that is producing and selling food products. Retail sales are not allowed as part of home occupations. The Planning Commission recommends that the city council adopt a resolution finding that the project is exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act and introduce an ordinance approving Development Code Amendment 21-001 to amend the Livermore Development Code, Section 6.02.060, Home Occupations, and Chapter 9.05 Home Occupation Permits, including the following amendments: to increase the onsite clients to a maximum of three at a time, allow one full-time equivalent employee in addition to the onsite resident, extending the closing hours to 7:00 PM, and include gross sales limits. Staff recommendation aligns with the Planning Commission recommendation, excluding the limit on gross sales. It should be noted that the implementing documents included in the packet this evening reflect the staff recommendation. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I'll open the public comment on six dot one. Do we have anybody who wishes to address us on this?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the council, councillor Kick.
I would move staff's recommendation limiting, not limiting gross sales, just as in the nature of service business, someone who's doing your taxes and someone who's doing your nails, those gross sales would be very hard to compare apples to oranges. So I move staff's recommendation. I think this will be very good for our community.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. There we have it, it's moved in second. Any comment on the item before we vote? Councillor Kick, you have your hand up, so, okay. Anyone else wish to comment? Okay. Councillor Member Carling?
Yeah, just to be clear, CFO would still have the limit of 50,000 gross sales, right?
That is correct. That is state law.
And we're, we're at that state law. And we would just allow anything other than a CFO to go beyond 50,000 gross sales, correct?
That's correct.
Great, thank you.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
Sorry, working to unmute. I just wanted to appreciate the work done on this. I remember the meeting this came up at and the concern. And this is a really nice, nicely done resolution, or resolution of the problem. I also appreciate the nature of the finances around, the differential income that can come in with a small business. It's not, the money itself doesn't matter. So I just, I just wanted to appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, I'll add that I just want to thank AJ Bikes for bringing this to our attention. And it's a good upgrade here to the ordinance. With this, can we have a roll call, please?
Councillor Banano is absent for the record. Councillor Carling?
Hi.
Councillor Kick? Hi. Vice Mayor Monroe?
Hi.
Mayor Warner?
Hi, passes unanimously. We're now on to six dot two. Hearing to consider housing and human services needs and grant priority for fiscal year 2122. Go ahead, the staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager, and I'd like to introduce Assistant Community Development Director, Eric Uranga.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I am Eric Uranga, your Assistant Community Development Director and the Housing and Human Services Manager. Before you tonight is a request to approve the funding priorities for the city's community development block grant and its federal home fund programs. Each year, the city of Livermore receives a federal allocation of community development block grant funds and federal home funds for use in a provision of vital human services in our community. Last year, Livermore received approximately $585,000 in total community development and home funds. Staff expects this year's allocation to be a similar amount. As part of the federal requirements to receive these funds, the city must develop and follow a citizens' participation plan. This plan, adopted as part of the city's five-year consolidated plan, requires that a public hearing on housing and human services needs be conducted prior to each year's grant cycle. This process includes establishing a list of priorities that will be used to award funding to various nonprofit service providers for the upcoming year. If adopted, these priorities will be used by the city's Human Services Commission in its review of submitted funding applications by local nonprofits. This year's priorities include public health services such as funding of mental health services and substance abuse counseling programs, funding of homeless services, including the covering of basic needs services and counseling, as well as critical safety net services such as food security and access to social and supportive services. The process leading to the award of these funds is scheduled to begin on December 4th with the opening of the application process. Submitted applications will be viewed by the commission in March with funding recommendations brought forth to the council for its consideration in April. This concludes my presentation. Thank you for your consideration. I am now available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, before we go to questions, you'll open the public comment on this item. Does anybody wish to address us on this?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, I'll close the public comment on six dot two. So then, bring it back to the council. Any questions, comments? Motions? Okay, I see councillor Kick.
I do just have a clarifying question that might be helpful to people that are watching. When will the majority of these grants be decided on by the Human Services Commission?
It will be at, the process where we'd be, presentations will be made by the nonprofit service providers will occur in the February and March meeting with their final recommendation made in March.
Okay, great, thank you. And I'll move that we approve.
Okay, Vice Mayor Monroe?
I'll second, and just state that these categories are critically important. I appreciate the way they've been laid out and look forward to seeing them enacted.
Thank you. Any further comments? If not, roll call, please.
Councillor Banano is absent for the record. Councillor Carling?
Hi.
Councillor Kick? Hi. Vice Mayor Monroe?
Hi.
Mayor Warner?
Hi, passes you unanimously with one absentee. So now we're on to six dot three. Public hearing and adoption of a resolution of formation to establish a wine heritage district in the Livermore Valley. And so what I'll do is I, as I think we're all, remember this from last time, there's a little script I need to go through. So again, bear with me. And I just want to double check with the city clerk. Now's the time for me to start that, is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. So this is the time and place of the public hearing for the consideration of the formation of the Livermore Valley Wine Heritage District. And before I formally open the hearing, city clerk, will you please explain how people can participate for this public hearing?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. To provide a public comment, please use the raise hand feature now or star nine if calling in. When you speak, please give your name, and if you wish to be counted in protest to the formation of the Livermore Valley Wine Heritage District, the address of the affected winery for which you represent, and the grounds for your protest. Each speaker may comment once, and we'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, for the petition process, if you have not submitted a signed protest to form the district, you may sign and submit it to the city clerk staff located out, the city, located outside of the city hall at any time before the public hearing is closed. Please be sure to mark and sign your protest before you turn it in, since unmarked or unsigned documents cannot be counted. A written protest may be withdrawn in writing at any time before the conclusion of the public hearing. Each written protest shall contain a description of the business in which the person subscribing the protest is interested, sufficient to identify the business, and if a person subscribing is not shown on the official records of the city as the owner of the business, the protest shall contain written evidence that the person is the owner of the business or authorized representative. A written protest that does not comply with this section shall not be counted in determining a majority protest. A representative of the city clerk is standing in front of city hall located at 102 South Livermore Avenue to receive protest now. Once the hearing is formally closed, no more documents may be presented. A short recess may be taken to gather any documents and received in front of city hall. Once the meeting resumes, all documents submitted will be reviewed by the city clerk. Under the law, the protests are disclosable public records and open for inspection during and after tabulation. Since state law requires that, if there is a majority protest, the assessment process is ended and we cannot take any further action for at least one year. A majority protest is defined as written protest received from owners of business in the district that would pay 50% or more of the assessments proposed to be levied. Protests are weighted based on the assessment proposed to be levied on each winery. If there is not a majority protest, the council will have the authority to approve the assessments and form the district. The city council may also make changes to reduce the boundaries of the proposed district map to be recorded. There will be a brief presentation from staff about the Livermore Valley Wine Heritage District, and then I will open the hearing to receive comments. At this point, I ask Adam Vanderwater, Director of Innovation and Economic Development, to give us the staff presentation, please.
Evening, honorable mayor, council members. Adam Vanderwater, your Director of Innovation and Economic Development. Tonight, I am pleased to bring you a revised resolution to form a wine heritage district in our beautiful and historic Livermore Valley. As we discussed on November 8th, the Livermore Valley Wine Heritage District is a benefit assessment district sponsored by the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association, the primary terms of which, the services, budget, cost, collection, duration, and management of the district remain the same as we've previously described. If enacted, the city of Livermore would still act as lead agency and would hire HDL companies to collect the 2% of gross direct-to-consumer sales within the California district boundaries as described in the management district plan. November 8th, one protester, Westover Winery, raised questions about the district boundaries and the specific benefit conferred to their property along the eastern edge of the district. Since that meeting, the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association Board of Directors has met and voted to request that council adopt a new, smaller district map focused on Livermore Valley, not our neighboring Amador and San Ramon Valleys to the east and north. This request was submitted to the city in a letter earlier today from the Acting Director of the Wine Growers Association with an attached map describing the proposed new boundary. This proposed new Wine Heritage District boundary represents a majority of wineries by both total direct-to-consumer sales and by simple number of affected wineries. Property and Business Improvement District Law of 1994 allows the council to adopt the district map that is smaller than and wholly contained in the previously noticed district boundaries. Section 36624 of the Streets and Highway Code specifically states that property, proposed assessments may only be revised by reducing any or all of them. At the public hearing, the city council may only make changes into or from the boundaries of the proposed property. At the public hearing, the city council may only make changes into or from the boundaries of the proposed property and business improvement district that will exclude territory that will not benefit from the proposed improvements, maintenance, and activities. You'll recall from November eighth, this slide from the Management District Plan Wine Heritage District Boundary. And it included the cities of Dublin and Danville and then the unincorporated parts of Amador and San Ramon Valley in Alameda and Contra Costa County. The revised map provided today by the Wine Growers Association zooms in on the southeastern portion of the previously presented map to focus on the unique history and geology of Livermore Valley. And here it's important to know that what you're seeing today is a subset of the map that was previously presented, both in the previous meeting and in the last slide. This map shows the border of the Livermore Valley American Viticultural Area along its eastern edge from Brushy Peak to the intersection with the Hetchetji Aqueduct east of Lake Del Valle. And from there, this new boundary follows the contours of several natural geologic districts studied in the March twenty-one, two thousand and eighteen Coastal Viticultural Consultant Study. It was based on watershed soil elevation and temperature. From that southeast boundary at Hetchetji Aqueduct along the Mendenhall Springs District up the highway eighty-four. If you're able to see my cursor following this point here, following highway eighty-four until it picks up the city of Livermore city limits, which it traces along its western boundary to near Las Pecitas College. And then back to Brushy Peak along the northern border of the Ultimont District, back to the eastern edge of the Livermore Valley American Viticultural Area. This newly revised map focuses on the specific geology, history, public understanding of, and specific benefit conferred to the Livermore Valley wineries. Staff therefore recommends that council receive public comment before considering adoption of this revised resolution to form the Livermore Valley Wine Heritage District with the November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one reduced boundary. I'm joined tonight by Brandy Addington, the Acting Director of the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association, and her Board Chair Stephen Kent-Mirisou. Madam Clerk, can we please unmute Stephen Kent-Mirisou to say a few words on behalf of the item's sponsor, the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association? This will conclude staff's presentation, and we'll be available to answer any questions you may have after we receive a comment from the wine growers and public comment.
Good evening, Mayor, Honorable Mayor and Council. This is Stephen Mirisou, the President of the Wine Growers Association, Livermore Valley. I just want to thank Adam Vandewater and all of my compatriots in the Livermore Valley wine-growing community for their support in the creation of the Wine Heritage District. I also want to thank you, council, for your continued support of the unique history of Livermore Valley wine-growing and our role in creating hospitality experiences for consumers all over the tri-valley area. We are in difficult times right now over the last year and a half with COVID, and even before that, the the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association has had existential financial challenges moving throughout COVID and moving certainly into the first half of next year and with a desire from nearly all of the members of the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association over the last couple of years to increase the marketing budget, to increase the possibility of growing visibility for the wineries, for for our unique terroir and our history, and for the quality of the wines being produced here to to create a funding mechanism that would allow for the kind of marketing that this region deserves and the kind of marketing dollars that would actually allow it to effectively describe to customers what it is that we actually do here and what the quality of our wines are here. The Heritage District is that mechanism. Without the WHD, there is no viable way forward for the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association to continue to exist. So this really is an existential crisis and challenge for the district. The WHD Steering Committee, of which I was a member, the Board of Directors, of which I am a member, have worked very diligently over the last eighteen months to build consensus and understanding around what this process is and why it's so important to all of the wineries in the district. We've had some challenges with respect to what the boundaries should be and what the boundaries are. The new boundary map really is, I think, a reflection of a move to really highlight what the Livermore Valley as a growing area is. Taking out of account, as it were, what San Ramon Valley and Diablo Valley are within the tri-valley sort of understanding. Livermore Valley is a very unique growing area. This is the area, this is the boundary, the original boundary of the Livermore Valley AVA that's going to be reflected in the Management District Plan for the Heritage District and will be the boundary that I think most effectively conveys what it is we're trying to accomplish as a group together. Your continued support in this is greatly appreciated. Areas that that were quote-unquote carved out won't be carved out, as it were, because they won't be included from the beginning of the process with the new map. So I think that we we have a unique opportunity tonight to to finally say yes, after this very long process, to forming the district. And I'm excited about where the future lies for Livermore Valley growing area and for the wineries that are included in the Assessment District. And so I hope that you will continue your support by voting for the formation of the WHD tonight. And if you have any specific questions for me, I'm available to speak to them. Thank you very much again for all your support.
Is that the end of the staff report section? I'm asking Mr. Vandewater here.
That is the end of the staff report.
Okay, thank you. So the public hearing is now open and like to proceed to public comments from the audience.
Yes, Mayor, there are four requests to speak. The first request is from Marcus Crowley, followed by William Smee, followed by Ian O'Leary. Marcus Crowley, please unmute yourself. Marcus Crowley, please unmute yourself.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, my name is Marcus Crowley. I'm president of Alameda County Taxpayer Association. We oppose this new district for many reasons. Alameda County does not need another government agency that promises to be temporary. This Wine Growers District promises to quit in six years, and I've never heard of a district ever quitting. This district can simply use the majority protest gimmick to extend its existence indefinitely. Now, we've all heard the story of the Frankenstein monster, and this district is a repeat of that story. This Wine Growers District will have a life of its own, complete with pension debts that make it impossible to stop. Just look at the other agencies in Alameda County. They have out-of-control pension debts as far as the eye can see. This district is starting with the misleading catchphrase of majority protest. This scheme requires a majority of all members to stop any new fee or life extension. The district will think up new assessments, send out notices, which the businesses will probably ignore, and the new fee will take effect without any democratic vote whatsoever. Stop this monstrous idea now before it can damage the wine grower's business. They don't need a new overlord. They need support in advertising. That's all. Thank you.
The next speaker is William Smee, followed by Ian O'Leary and David B. Kent. William Smee, please unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. This is William Westover Smythe. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, great. This is William Westover Smythe of Westover Winery in Castor Valley. And I would like to thank the Honorable Mayor and council members for delaying approval of the Livermore Wine Heritage District from November eighth until this evening. This allowed some very serious concerns, questions, and other matters to be properly addressed. And I believe the new map, excluding our winery, Ruby Hill, Rubino, and Tenuta, has addressed many of those concerns and places the district around where it should be, and that's in the city of Livermore. So thank you very much, and I'd also like to thank Stephen Mirisou for talking to me about some of these issues and and changing the map. That's it.
Next speaker is Ian O'Leary, followed by David B. Kent. Ian O'Leary, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name's Ian O'Leary. I'm a member of the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association Board of Directors. I sit on the Finance Committee and the Wine Heritage District Formation Committee. Over the last three years, I've worked with our committees, with our board, and with the winery members, exploring all options to ensure adequate funding and growth that is sustainable for the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association in its mission to promote and protect our very good wine region. The Wine Heritage District funding mechanism is is what we need to meet our goals. They're focused specifically on marketing and promotion of the Livermore Valley. The visitors and money that they will support will bring money to the wineries, the restaurants, lodging, and economic vitality to our entire community. I'd also like to take a brief moment and and dispute what Mr. Crowley had to say. There is no quitting on this. The fact is, it's a four-and-a-half-year plan that goes up for an entire revote, including that by the county and the and the city. There'll then be increments that are voted on by the people that are involved with it in a democratic way. There is no pension debt, and there is no overlord. This is a community of people that are paying their their assessment for the benefit of those that are paying, not for anybody else. I fully support the formation of the Wine Heritage District as presented to you this evening, and I ask for your support as we collectively strive to promote this world-class wine region. Thank you very much for your support.
Final request is from David B. Kent. David B. Kent, please unmute yourself.
Good evening. I'm David Kent, and I'm the co-owner of a winery in the Livermore Valley. I'd like to address a letter that the city council has received from the Alameda County Taxpayers Association. The first point is, since the city of Livermore may limit the Livermore Valley Wine Heritage District to the confines of the Livermore Valley, all assessed wineries will derive an equal degree of benefit from the district. Second, as Steve Mirisou pointed out, the San Ramon Valley, the Castro Valley, and the Amador Valley wineries are not in the Livermore Valley, so they would thus be excluded from this district. The third point, contrary to the the allegations made in the letter, Wentie and Kinkanen are in the Livermore Valley, so they are subject to the assessment and will pay the most fees into the district based on their relative size. So there is no special treatment of larger wineries in the Heritage District. And finally, no Livermore Valley wineries are carved out of the district, and all wineries pay the same two percent. So every winery within the district is treated the same. And I think it's important to note that a majority of the wineries voted in favor of forming this district, so they had a vote. That was a City of Livermore requirement, and the vast majority of the dollar sales that would be subject to this assessment voted in favor of it as well. So this is an extremely fair and equal-handed proposition, and I hope the council will vote in favor of formation of the district. Thank you.
Mayor, there are no more requests to speak.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I believe I may want to ask the city attorney to respond on the taxpayer thing. But I know I've got the procedure I have to go through. And so I'm not sure whether I close the public hearing before we hear from the city attorney or during this part of it. If you could, city attorney, if you could answer that question, then if it's appropriate, then you can go further with respect to addressing the taxpayer question.
Mr. Mayor, this is your city attorney, Jason Alco. I think it would be appropriate for me to respond at this point, and then you can proceed with the rest of the proceeding this evening. So if I may, I would just like to respond briefly to the letter that was received today, this afternoon, from the Alameda County Taxpayers Association. That letter makes reference to Streets and the Highways Code, Section three, six, six, three, two, sub C. The letter makes a site that's section for the proposition that this assessment could not be levied because that particular area of the law says you cannot levy it on properties for improvements or services to certain properties, those being residential and agricultural. That's an interesting read. We're not sure that there's interpretation of case law to support that. And I know that the applicants, that the ones who asked to form this, have retained Civitas, who's one of the preeminent firms involved in this. I believe one of the principals helped create the the bid code of nineteen ninety-four. That said, the assessment in this case is on the sales of wines by certain wineries. It's not assessed against the property. It's not assessed for improvement. So it is dealing with wine sales, but we will continue to research that to see if there's anything that supports that particular interpretation. If that were to be the case, there is a responsibility city could pursue, which would be to disestablish the district. However, as we sit here today, we do not see this as a reason to halt the proceedings this evening. So I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. I think I'll close the public hearing at this point, go through the process, and then we'll come back to asking people questions once we get into the right branch of the decision tree here. I'm closing the public hearing. And now this is the last call for protests to be delivered to the city clerk. The public hearing is now closed. City clerk, do you need a short break to gather the documents?
Mayor, yes, a ten-minute break would be ideal.
How long, did you say?
Ten minutes, please.
Okay, we'll take a ten-minute break for the city clerk to tabulate and announce the results. And you'll put up on the screen what time we're returning? Yes. Great, thank you. Great, thank you. City clerk, you need more time, or are we good?
Good evening.
Mayor, this is Marty with TB30. We will give you a count in, so if you save when you're ready, we'll count you in for TB30.
I didn't hear the city clerk. Did you say we're ready to go?
Mayor, I believe TB30 is going to count you in.
Okay, but you're ready to go.
I am.
Good.
Okay, Mayor, this is Marty at TB30. If you are ready, we will count you in.
Okay.
And here we go, in five, four, three, two, one.
Okay, welcome back, everyone. The city clerk has had the opportunity to tabulate the results and will now announce them.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. This is your city clerk, Marie Weber. Traditionally, I would turn camera on to open ballots received. However, the city received only one protest ballot based on the revised map, which was included in your supplemental packet this evening, as well as 25 signed petitions in favor, which represented a majority of sales as certified by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, and therefore no majority protest exists. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Because we have not received a majority protest of formation of the assessment district, at this time, we will consider a resolution adopting and approving the management district plan by designating the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association as the Livermore Valley Wine Heritage District Owners Association, and directing staff to take all necessary actions to complete the establishment of the district and to levy the assessments beginning January 1, 2022. The City Council has two resolutions before to consider. One that was included in the agenda materials to form a district with boundaries that corresponds closely to the full Livermore Valley agricultural area. That's the cities of Pleasanton and San Ramon, excepted, or a second that was included in the supplemental materials with a winegrower's letter to form a district with reduced district boundaries that lies entirely within the AVA, but excludes the cities of Danville, Dublin, Pleasanton, and San Ramon, and other areas within the AVA that are not included within the boundaries depicted in the reduced boundary map attached to the letter from the Livermore Valley Wine Growers. When making a motion, I request the council member making the motion specify which resolution is to be adopted. And so we have to consider it off either the resolution, the agenda packet declaring results of majority protest proceedings and establishing the Livermore Valley Wine Heritage District, and adopting the management district plan for the larger district, or the resolution, the supplemental materials declaring results to the majority protest proceedings and establishing the Livermore Valley Wine Heritage District and adopting the management district plan for the reduced district. So now, I'll bring it to the council for questions and discussion before we proceed. Councilmember Kick.
I just want to clarify. I just want to clarify the results read by our city clerk. Those 25 people that signed and the one person that protested, are they within the new boundary or the old boundary?
Good evening, councilmember Kick. This is your city clerk, Marie Weber. The person that protested this evening was in the new boundary. We did have a prior protest, which would have been the larger boundary. So at that time, if the council adopts that resolution, it would be two protests. If they adopt the revised resolution, it will be one protest, neither of which constitute a majority.
And the 25 that signed, are any of those that signed for the formation of this, would they be excluded from from participation with the new boundary?
For that question, I will defer to Mr. Vandewater.
I believe all 25 signed petitioners are within both the old and the new boundary.
Great, thank you for that.
Councilmember Carling.
Yes, thank you. Maybe Mr. Vandewater knows the answer to this, but with the old, larger boundary, we had gotten confirmation from a couple of other jurisdictions, notably, I think, Danville and Dublin agreeing to join. Now, they're not going to be included if we were to adopt the reduced boundary. I was just curious, has someone communicated to them that we are considering the reduced boundary and what their reaction was?
Adam Vandewater, you're Director of Innovation Economic Development. We have not had direct conversations with the clerks of those consenting agencies. As you recall, and as you mentioned, Danville, Dublin, Alameda County, and Contra Costa, all approved resolutions of consent. In this newer proposed boundary, it does not anymore include the cities of Danville, Dublin, or Contra Costa County. It is entirely the city of Livermore and unincorporated portions of Alameda County. There were no wineries in Dublin or Danville at the time of that consent, and there would be none now. So there would be no change. From the administrative perspective of those governing bodies, they were self-assessing these businesses for the specific purposes identified in the management district plan. And there are, again, those no boundaries, or sorry, no wineries in that boundary. We do know that by shrinking the boundary from its previous size to its current proposed that there are only six wineries that were not included. And those include some of the wineries that had protested. Westover, Ruby Hills, Rubino, and those that either were never responded to the petition or were in favor, including Shenard, Elliston, and Nellatera.
Okay, any other, Vice Mayor Monroe?
I was going to move the reduced boundaries resolution.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, councilmember Kick.
I just wanted to thank staff for coming back to this. I think it was a good idea that we tabled this and came back with a resolution that I think still solves a huge problem, and I just want to commend the people that worked on this. I know specifically it's hard to quantify the return on investment on something that it seems very hard to quantify, like marketing and what that's going to do for our community, but I think this is going to be very important for generations to come. So I'm looking forward to seeing what you do with this work. So thank you for that, and good luck.
Okay, I'll just say I would second what councilmember Kick just said. It's glad we were able to do this as well as we are tonight, and I think this is extremely important for the for our area. So with that, can we have any other comments? If not, a roll call, please.
I just want to third that.
All right. Okay, we can get a fourth, I guess. We can't get a fifth, though. Anyway, we have a roll call.
Councilmember Banano is absent for the record. Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Councilmember Kick. Hey. Vice Mayor Monroe.
Hi.
Mayor Warner.
Hi. Passes unanimously with one absent. So we're now on to 7.1, Matters for Consideration. A discussion and direction regarding the Tri-Valley Conservancy's request to sponsor a ballot initiative to protect water quality and agriculture and agriculture in the South Livermore Valley. So we can have the staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager, and planning manager Steve Stewart will lead us through this item. Mr. Stewart? Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. The Tri-Valley Conservancy, with support from South Livermore Valley stakeholders, is requesting the city sponsor a ballot initiative for the November 2022 election. The purpose of the initiative would be to protect water quality and agriculture in the South Livermore Valley. It would amend language in the South Livermore Valley Urban Growth Boundary Initiative to allow the city to extend sewer service to serve wine country uses envisioned in the Alameda County's South Livermore Valley Area Plan. The proposed initiative would not change the actual location of the urban growth boundary. Consistent with council direction last summer, your staff and consultants have been evaluating the technical and financial aspects of extending sewer service to the South Livermore Valley, and specifically, we've been evaluating pipeline alignments, potential improvements to the existing infrastructure, including improvements to the city's water treatment plant, costs, and funding mechanisms. So this evening, staff is seeking direction from you at the policy level regarding review and preparation of the initiative language, and also at the project level to continue analyzing the technical, financial, and environmental aspects of extending the city's sewer service beyond the urban growth boundary. Staff's recommendation also includes an appropriation from the general fund to cover the environmental and technical studies. If the council directs staff to prepare ballot initiative language and authorizes the budget appropriations, we would anticipate returning to the council with the initiative language and a supplemental environmental impact report in May of next year. That concludes my staff presentation. Also here this evening from the Conservancy staff are Laura Antrim, the Executive Director, and Diana Roberts, Land and Media Specialist, and board members Lori Souza, Kevin Baskin, Jim Fulton, Carl Wentie. If you have questions for staff, happy to answer those at this time. If not, I will turn it over to Laura Antrim at the Conservancy.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers and staff, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. As he mentioned, this is Laura Antrim, the Executive Director of the Tri-Valley Conservancy. And the Tri-Valley Conservancy is in support of this initiative to protect water quality and agriculture in the South Livermore Valley. TVC was founded with the goal to safeguard the Tri-Valley's urban growth boundaries, support the South Livermore Valley Area Plan, and achieve critical mass of cultivated land, particularly vineyards. The wine and agriculture industries are part of what defines Livermore and contributes to our quality of life, as well as our beautiful landscape. Due to increasing restrictions on septic systems, individual vineyard property owners with septic systems are limited in making improvements and not allowed to enhance their properties with visitor-attracting uses. This clean water initiative will strengthen cultivated agriculture by facilitating the types of projects outlined in the South Livermore Valley Area Plan over 25 years ago. The area plan protects and expands agriculture and restricts commercial and residential development adjacent to Livermore while promoting uses that enhance the recognition of the area as an important premium wine and agricultural region. Livermore's current vineyards and wineries need all the support we can give them to become more profitable and gain a reputation for the fine wines it produces. Action needs to be taken now to create the infrastructure to protect our groundwater and support our wine region. Tri-Valley Conservancy supports the proposed initiative to extend the sanitary sewer. TVC sees it as an action we can take now to improve our groundwater quality for the future, which will in turn improve public health and protect our agriculture, specifically vineyards in the Livermore Valley. It is our hope the council will authorize the preparation of the supplemental environmental impact report for the South Livermore Sewer Expansion Project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does that conclude the staff report?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll now open the public comment on this item. And I see we have a number of people that wish to speak.
Mayor, the first request to speak is from Jean King, followed by Donna Cabein and Tri-Valley Conservancy staff. Jean King, please unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening. This is Jean King. I live in Livermore, and I would like to make several comments about the EIR, the Supplemental EIR. Since this, since the original EIR was done almost 30 years ago, the supplemental EIR needs to be very conscious of the changes that have occurred in the area since that happened. And especially, we need to consider the traffic that has changed, the air pollution, and the water contamination. Secondly, I have a simple question that I'm sure that you can help me with now. In Attachment Three, the proposal to prepare a supplemental environmental impact report, on page three, it states, quote, "The city's capital improvement plan identifies the bottleneck project," parentheses, B-O-C-I-P-P-O-six, parentheses, "that might need to be undertaken sooner with the implementation of the sewer expansion project." "The bottleneck project will be included in the environmental analysis to describe the, quote, 'whole' of the project," unquote, under the sequela." End of the quote from the attachment. I couldn't find any information on the bottleneck project. I did a search on the city website, and in particular, the capital improvement plan, and did not find it. And could you please tell me more about this bottleneck project, or tell me where I can find more about it? Thirdly, I am concerned, and have heard from others who are concerned, about the capacity of the sewer treatment facility and the capacity of the sewer lines to and from the sewer treatment facility. I ask that that issue be specifically addressed in the EIR. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Donna Cabein, followed by Tri-Valley Conservancy staff and James Folta. Donna Cabein, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Donna Cabein. The proposed EIR contract only includes two areas of study. Other significant areas that need to be analyzed include traffic, circulation, air quality impacts, and sewer capacity issues, including sewer line extension capacity, sewer plant capacity, and sewer capacity on the line that discharges into the bay. The last EIR for the involved areas was certified in the 1990s. Since then, traffic on Tesla Road to avoid I-580 has dramatically increased to the point that it is frequently gridlocked, both in the morning and the afternoon. Certainly, vehicle miles traveled has increased, so related air quality impacts must also be addressed. Even if the total square footage and uses to be served are not changed, the trip generation factors for those uses may have changed. While these impacts and changed traffic conditions may predominantly occur during commute hours, the issue of traffic impacts and air quality impacts must be addressed. The money proposed for the SEIR contract may not be enough to cover the significant issues the public will ask to have studied during the notice of preparation. The proposal for an SEIR limited to two subject areas is therefore inadequate. Since the 1990s, there are several new significant environmental impacts that could require major revisions to the previous EIR due to the chain situation. The second issue involves the wording of the draft initiative. Under Findings Point Nine, the phrase "at no cost to current residents" is too vague. Another section should be added. A new sanitary assessment district needs to be formed that will specify that all the costs, including capital costs, sewer line extensions, hookup costs, and operational costs will be paid for entirely by users outside of the UGB for the life of the project. That may require a separate vote, but it is necessary for the protection of current users. Finally, a contingency clause should be added to the initiative that even if the voters approve the sewer expansion in concept, the project will not go forward without the formation of a sanitary district that will be responsible for all financial costs. And lastly, please explain to the public tonight what the bottleneck project is. It's referred to in several parts of the information given tonight, but nowhere are there any further defining bits of information about this project. So again, tonight, I'm looking forward to hearing exactly what this bottleneck project is. Thank you.
The next speaker is participant Tri-Valley Conservancy staff, followed by James Folta and Lori Souza. Tri-Valley Conservancy staff, please unmute yourself.
Hello. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name's Diana Roberts. I'm a staff member at Tri-Valley Conservancy. I just wanted to make a short comment. I believe this, this project is really important investment in the future farming and winemaking in the Livermore Valley. Extending the sewer system is vital for the protection of soil quality or groundwater in our area, the community health, our wine country is an asset to our community and our environment. Without investing in it, we are at risk of that community not being self-sustaining and losing it from Livermore. Moving forward, this, with this initiative would be the best option for wineries, and it would ensure that there's a sustainable and safe way to dispose of waste out in the county. And it would also allow for wineries to continue adapt and change an economy and allow them to remain vital in the future. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
The next speaker is James Folta, followed by Lori Souza and Tamara Reese. James Folta, please unmute yourself.
Good evening. So I'm James Folta. I support the Livermore Valley wineries and related businesses and very much want them to succeed now and into the future. I think they are a big part of what makes Livermore special. So I want to voice my support for preparing a ballot initiative for water quality and agriculture to support that, that wine location there on Tesla Road. I support using City of Livermore funds to prepare the EIR. And I think it's important that, you know, that we need to be careful with the ballot initiative, that it's drafted to avoid unintended consequences. You know, we need to keep that clean and keep other special interests out of that initiative. And I think the best way to do that is for Livermore City to take the lead in preparing that using a modest amount of City of Livermore funds to do so. So it, I just want to voice my support again, and I don't want to repeat everything that Laura said earlier, so I will close. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lori Souza, followed by Tamara Reese and Kevin Baskin. Lori Souza, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor Warner and City Councilmembers. I'm Lori Souza, and I've been a resident in Livermore since 1979. I'm also the Vice Chair of the Tri-Valley Conservancy Board. I think recent events such as the pandemic, the drought, and wildfires has really sharpened our focus on things that are fundamentally important in our lives, such as the quality of our water. I think the proposed sewer line extension will help us preserve our water quality and at the same time, help support our local wine region. I respectfully encourage you to approve the staff's recommendation for Agenda Item 7.1. Thank you.
The next speaker is Tamara Royce, followed by Kevin Baskin. Tamara Royce, please unmute yourself.
Got it. Thank you. Hi, I'm Tamara Royce. I am the President of Friends of Open Space and Vineyards, and I'm here tonight in that capacity. I also sit on the Tri-Valley Conservancy Board. You know, FOV has had a long history in the South Livermore Valley. We started out as Save the Vineyards, and we were instrumental in the initial development of the plans to protect South Livermore from undue residential development and try to encourage, you know, the future of wineries and agriculture in, in the area. So we are very pleased that this sewer initiative has been brought forward, and we, we see many positives in the, the approach that we are being, we are looking at tonight. We agree that water quality is important, and we're hearing more and more about how the septic has negative consequences, and it's very hard for winery owners who are on septic to even get a permit to do anything anymore. If you're not, you know, already ready permitted, if you want to have water on your wineries. We're very encouraged that the draft initiative speaks about putting conservation easements on properties that aren't already under easement. So we see this initiative as not only a means to protect the water, but also to protect the land in South Livermore. And one of our goals in supporting it was that, you know, we didn't want it to change the land uses or to allow new, you know, denser residential development, and it, it would do none of those things. So given the future of our wine country and it's, you know, the, the, the future growth and stability of the wine country, we see that the sewer, the sewer line will help us stay there and even get better and promote the agritourism that we need as well to keep the wine country functioning. Thank you.
Last request to speak is from Kevin Baskin. Kevin Baskin, please unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Kevin Baskin. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Warner and City Councilmembers and staff. As I said, my name's Kevin Baskin. I work and live in the city of Livermore, and I've been a resident for almost 15 years. Due to my past experience, I'm very supportive of this initiative to extend the sewer service into the wine-producing areas surrounding Livermore. I have direct experience with the benefits of this type of service for winemaking operations, having led the project several years ago at the Concan and Winery. The implementation of sewer service has protected our groundwater and quite frankly, eliminated the possibility of shutting down the winery and allowed the Concan and Winery to continue to operate as it has for the past 138 years. I think an extension of the sewer line further into wine country would protect one of our most precious resources, which is water, and provide the proper infrastructure for other wineries to connect to. This extension will also help the South Livermore Valley Area Plan reach its ultimate goal of making the Livermore area a premium wine country destination. Thank you for your attention to this.
Mayor, there are no more requests to speak?
Okay, I'll close the public comment on this item before we bring it back to the council. Does the, does staff have any response to some of the questions raised in the public comment?
This is your Community Development Director, Paul Spence, or City Engineer, Bob Vin, can you answer the question about the bottleneck that was raised?
This is Bob Vin, you're a city engineer. I believe the bottleneck they're referring to is identified in the city sewer master plan. It's on the sewer line along East Avenue in the vicinity of Nocrest, where it calls for upsizing. The, the South Livermore Sewer would need to tie into the East Avenue sewer line. And while staff has done a preliminary analysis of the lines leading to the plant and have identified the, the said bottleneck as the only up-sizing needed, part of your action tonight would fund a consultant doing a more thorough analysis of the whole proposal.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'll turn it to Councilmember Carling.
Yes, thank you. I, like a couple of the speakers, I didn't know what bottleneck project was either, so I'm glad you clarified that. I'm generally in support of this. I think it would be, it's a good idea. And as I understand it, we, the city, would work on the language for the initiative, and it would return to us at some time in the future for approval. Is that correct?
That's correct. We anticipate returning to council in March.
Great. I looked at some of the language in the draft, and I had some questions about things, but I won't worry about it tonight. I do, what happens to Buena Vista in this scenario? Anything other than tearing up their street and putting in a sewer line? Do they get annexed into the city?
So we are looking at pipeline alignments that could go down Buena Vista. That would potentially offer an opportunity for residents to connect either by annexing into the city or through out-of-area service agreements if they were to remain in the county. Typically, an out-of-area service agreement would require an agreement to annex in the future if it became viable or done as a whole. So, again, that would be an opportunity for residents to connect. We would not be forcing connections there.
Okay, so it wouldn't necessarily require them to do. That would be up to them. That's right?
That's correct.
Right. Thanks. That's all I have.
Councilmember Kig?
I know these weren't necessarily supposed to be on the same agenda because we pushed the further item, but I think this is important, and we're going to be, you know, having a district that supports our wineries with, with marketing, and without the basic infrastructure for them to grow their businesses and allow them to thrive, all that marketing's not going to do, not going to do so well. So I think this is important, and the basic infrastructure to business needs to come along with, with the other item that we just, we just talked about. So I am in support, and I will let Vice Mayor Monroe say anything before I potentially move something.
Vice Mayor Monroe? I, I would actually let you move. I was just going to speak in support of both the initiative and allocating the EIR, the, the exploration with the EIR. If you want to make the motion, go for it. I'll second it.
I move that we go with staff's recommendation to look into this and that we will take a closer look in March to hopefully continue to support our growing and future thriving wine region.
Vice Mayor Monroe?
I think there were two, there were two pieces there. Are you, are you moving both of those?
Yes.
I'm, okay, then I'm seconding both of those.
Okay. Any further discussion by the council? I'll just add that I'm very much in favor of proceeding along these lines as well. So we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Banano is absent for the record. Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Councilmember Kig? Hey, Vice Mayor Monroe?
Hi.
Mayor Warner?
Hi. Passes unanimously with one absent. All right, great. We got a couple of items here that's really going to help the, our wine region. So we're now on to Agenda Item Eight, Council Committee Reports and Matters Initiated. I think usually I start with Councilmember Kig.
You usually do. I don't have anything significant to report on. I, we will have an item coming back fairly soon, which I guess we don't technically need action on right now, but just to give a heads up that Tri-Valley Transportation Commission is going to be taking a look at our SEP and our fee schedule, so that will be coming to our agenda in the next few months. And so just heads up for everybody here, and, and staff will be on top of making sure you know all about it.
And there's no input needed from us?
There, there will be when it comes to us, but it is no input needed at this time. So just heads up, think, think about all things transportation and fees in your mind.
Okay. Councilmember Carling?
Thank you. Just a couple of extra things beyond what I submitted to the city clerk this morning. Councilmember Banano and I have had several meetings with staff on climate and particularly with respect to the draft of the Climate Action Plan. I think they've been very productive and very enlightening for me, certainly. Participated with the League of California Cities East Bay Division. We had a meeting about two weeks ago on transportation, and we're lucky enough to have the directors of both Alameda County and Contra Costa County Transportation Executives talking to us about some of the projects now and in the future. It's about some of the projects now and in the future. It's looking out even a few decades, so it's really quite amazing the kinds of things that they've got planned for the Bay Area. Also participated in a Tri-Valley Affordable Housing Commission meeting, and that one's, again, some folks from the state talking about financing of affordable housing. Again, as you probably recognize, it's a, can be a complicated and challenging to get the kinds of grants needed to produce, build, and house those needing that are less able to afford some of the high prices in the Livermore and the Bay Area. Very interesting tour conducted by the Stop Waste staff at the Carbon Farming demonstration in the Altima. This is off of Flynn Road. So if you drive out to the Altima, headed east, get off at Flynn at the top of the pass and go south about a mile, that there's about 90 acres there of Stop Waste property where they're doing carbon farming to sequester carbon. Very interesting project and well worth the time that I spent up there seeing that. I joined the mayor earlier last week, I guess, on Angie's Way dedication at the Transit Center, which was a lot of fun. And then even more, even additionally was fun was joining one of my colleagues from Pleasanton, Kathy Narum, along with the Director of Goodness Village, Kim Curtis, to do chili judging. Was a fundraiser for Goodness Village last week at the Main Street Brewery in Pleasanton. There were 16 chilies that we had to judge and, and make a decision about what the best chili was. So there was not only a judge's choice, but the popular choice of the public as well. So that was a lot of fun. That's it for me. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. The chili cook-offs are good things. So the Vice Mayor Monroe.
Well, I, I submitted something from EVCE online. I'll just, there are a couple of things cooking there, so to speak, but nothing to report at this moment, you know, for council to, to take action on. I was also at the chili cook-off, although not as a judge, and my choice would have been different from Councilmember Carling's choice or Councilmember Narum's choice. There you go. But that's what 16 different chilies will do for you. It was, it was wonderful to see the amount of support Goodness Village got. So a couple of other things did go on, but I really wanted to just give a shout out to Sunday when I went to Farmer's Market and just appreciated the city staff there taking notes on on what we can do with Farmer's Market. And I believe they were also gathering information on Veterans, Veterans Park. Also saw Art Built Community at the Last Batch Market. And just wanted to really appreciate the diversity that this community has and the sense of community it has. Particularly as we go into this Thanksgiving weekend. So that's all I have for, for, for this evening. I wish everyone good Thanksgiving.
Okay, thank you. I, list of the events I attended are in the report. Angie's Way was really good. Just, I first came to town 45 years ago and remember the A and W and being able to recognize the, one of the car hops there and the, and the fact that she was so beloved and an incredible family, so that was a good, good dedication. A couple of matters initiated is with respect to just letting everybody know about a couple of council subcommittees I've created. One is on the downtown. It's myself and Councilmember Banano, duration of six months. And the idea is to stay abreast of the downtown projects and bring back info to the council for discussion, direction, action on a timely basis. We're not a decision-making body. But the good news about forming this subcommittee is we're a lot of action is going to be happening downtown. City's going to be, the council's going to be needing to weigh in appropriately as staff brings us the reports. And so Councilmember Banano and I will help keep abreast of that so that when the items do come before the council, we're as prepared as possible. The second one, subcommittee that I've got going is one around our norms and values, and it's Councilmember Carling and myself. And I think it's around council expectations and potentially our, you know, improvements to our process for council meetings. I think we've shown that we can be very efficient, and I still look at the process, and I think there are things that we can improve upon. And so the idea is for Councilmember Carling and I to look at how we do things and to come back to the council with recommendations for, again, discussion, direction, and action. And so it's, with that, I'll, I think we're going to be adjourning to a regular city council meeting on December 13th, 2021 at seven, like held virtually via Zoom. And I want to say, hope everyone has a good Thanksgiving holiday, has a chance to reflect on, on life really, and, and everyone, and stay, stay safe. So we'll see you on December 13th. Good night.